Okay, everyone. Thank you. For reorganization purposes, do I have a motion for chairman?
I'll make a motion. I'll nominate Brian Tannenhouse.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bivai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Paramonte?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you and appreciate everyone for the vote of confidence in reappointing me. All right, next, we've got a nomination for vice chair. Do I have a motion, please?
Like to make a motion to nominate Nick Husser.
I'll second that nomination.
Who seconded Joe?
Joe.
Thank you. Mr. Bivai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Paramonte?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. For expedient purposes, let's just go through some of the items. For Ron, what's the best way to just say during executive session who we agree?
No, no, no. You nominate people in public and you vote in public. What happened in executive session was staff and it's not, you know, not to be disclosed out here.
Okay, do we have a nomination for secretary?
I'll nominate Eileen Rabano.
Okay, nomination for consulting attorney.
I'll second. Wait, hang on. We have to second Eileen?
We can do.
Are you wishing to just?
I'm gonna do the whole list.
Motion that's gonna go through everyone else and then you'll seek a second?
Yep.
All right, all right, so you can do that. So, Mr. Bivai. I guess, actually, Mr. Chairman, the way to do it is if there's a motion, the person making the motion lists all the need.
I'll do it, Brian.
Okay.
All right, for secretary, I make a motion to nominate Eileen Rabano for consulting attorney, Ron Cuciaro. Consulting engineer, Laura Newman, CME, building planner, Jen Beam from Leon S. Vacian. Licensed tree expert, Sherry Sparrow from CME. Administrative officer and recording secretary, Eileen Rabano. And I guess that would be it for now.
Environmental liaison?
Well, we'll come to that later.
Okay.
I will second all those motions.
Have a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bivai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Paramonte?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, do I have a motion resolution of meeting minutes 2022 to 2023?
Those are meeting dates.
Sorry, meeting date, sorry.
Sorry.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bivai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Paramonte?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Okay, the official newspapers are Asbury Park Star Ledger and Tri-Town News. We don't need to vote on that since that's.
No, we, this board is subject to the decision of the governing body on that, so we just recognize those three newspapers as the official newspapers of the municipality.
Thank you. All right, we need the nomination for environmental commission liaison.
Well, that's automatic, so we just need to identify who is on the environmental commission.
Okay, that's the question.
And the site review and master plan are your appointments?
Those are my appointments. So, we're going to appoint for site review committee, we're gonna, we're gonna make Nick Husser the chairman. And members will be Rob Seaman and Paul Dorado. For master plan review committee, chairman will be Paul Bivai. Members will be Brian Greenfield and Rob Nick Castro. Ron, we just wanted to verify legally, Brian as an employee of the town can be a member of the master plan committee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody. And thank you for the.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Oh, we get into the meeting. Approval of minutes? We have a regular meeting, September 2nd, 2021. Eligible voters are Mr.?
The old, oh, the old one, sorry. It's Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser.
Thank you.
Mr. Seaman and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Okay, do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
A regular meeting, September 23, 2021. Approval of minutes is the voters, eligible voters, right on this one?
No, and I need to do a roll call first on the other one. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. September 23rd, the voting members are Mr. Husser and Mr. Cristiano.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
That was you, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, and so, Mr. Husser?
Yes.
And Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Approval of minutes for regular meeting, October 7th, 2021. Who are the eligible voters, please?
Dorado, Mr. Husser. Mr. Seaman and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Hey, do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Or roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Where are these vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
You have any correspondence?
I have tons of correspondence. The first thing, I have a letter from Ed Liston. He's the attorney for Michael Hammer, whose application is on tonight's agenda. He asked that that application be carried to February 17th, 2022 with no further notice. And he granted the board an extension of time to act on the application to April 1st, 2022.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, I'll make the announcement. Yes, please. Okay, the application of Michael Hammer, case number SD-2994, be carried to the board's February 17th, 2022 meeting. That meeting will be a virtual meeting which begins at 7 o'clock. There'll be no further notice to property owners. All application materials will be available online. And information on how to access the meeting will be available on the township's website at least 10 days prior to the meeting. Thank you.
I also have an email from attorney Sal Alfieri regarding the application for Pioneer at Howell, case number SP 1037, asking that their application be carried to January 20th, 2022 with no further notice. And he granted an extension of time through February 28th, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the application of Pioneer at Howell LLC, case number SP-1037, be carried to the board's January 20th, 2022 meeting, beginning at 7 o'clock. It will be a virtual meeting. There'll be no further notice to property owners. All application materials be available on the township's website. And the information and directions on how to access the meeting will be available on the township's website at least 10 days prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Alfieri also sent in something for case number SP 1093, Ecosystems LLC. He asked that that application also be carried to January 20th, 2022 with no further notice.
That's the 20th also you said, Eileen?
I'm sorry?
That's the 20th also you said?
Yes, yes, January 20th.
The application of Ecosystems LLC, case number SP 1093, be carried to the board's January 20th, 2022 meeting, beginning 7 o'clock. It will be a virtual meeting. All application materials will be on, are on file on the township's webs and accessible on the township's website. There'll be no further notice to property owners. And information and directions on how to access the virtual meeting will be available on the township's website at least 10 days prior to the hearing date.
Thank you. I have an email from Mr. Pape. He's the attorney for John Kelly. And he asked that that application be carried to February 3rd, 2022 with no further notice. That's case SD 3000.
I'm sorry, Eileen, you said February 23rd?
February 3rd, the first meeting in February.
Okay, so the application of John Kelly, application number SD-3000, will be carried to the board's February 3rd, 2022 meeting, which will be a virtual meeting beginning at 7 o'clock. All application materials are available on the township's website. There'll be no further notice to property owners. And information and directions on how to access the virtual meeting will be available on the township's website at least 10 days prior to the hearing.
I also have an email from Michael Herbert. He's the attorney for Wadsworth Development LLC, otherwise known as Ramtown Estates. He asked that their application be carried to February 3rd, 2022 with no further notice.
Hey, the application of Wadsworth Development LLC, case number SD-2998, be carried to the board's February 3rd, 2022 meeting. That will be a virtual meeting beginning at 7 o'clock. All application materials are available on the township's website. There'll be no further notice to property owners. And information and directions on how to access the virtual meeting will be available on the township's website at least 10 days prior to the virtual hearing.
Thank you. I don't have any correspondence from the attorney, but for case number SP 1075, 127 Squankham Yellowbrook LLC, that's on tonight's agenda. The public notice missed the deadline, so their notice is deficient. They have to be rescheduled. So if we could just make an announcement for members of the public that that will not be heard tonight. And if they got a new notice, they'll get a new, new notice for a new hearing date.
Okay, so application of Squankham Yellowbrook LLC, SP 1075, we heard a future date to be, to be determined. And the notice is not being carried. There'll be a new notice. So if you're entitled to notice, you will receive a new notice.
Thank you. And the last item, we went through this at our last year, near hearing in December. Mr. Pape sent a letter requesting a special meeting for case number SD 2990, FP Howell LLC. He is in the audience. I don't know if he wants to address the board or if they want to discuss the special meeting tonight. We couldn't do much before now because we didn't know who our professionals were, but.
We also didn't know who our board members were gonna be.
Right, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just before we open it to Mr. Pape, if he wants to address the board, I don't know what everyone's availability is. I don't know if you want to sort of take a poll on that.
Yeah, I'm looking at my calendar now. What, 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 what is the preferred date, Eileen?
I have no idea. We'd have to bring this, I mean, it depends on the professionals when they're available. And then if Mr. Pape's people are available, we also need time to get a public notice out, so we need 10 days' notice for that.
Do you want to bring Mr. Pape in then, please?
So I think maybe we should bring Mr. Pape in and discuss it, or?
Am I in?
You are. We just, you have no video, though.
Do we have a meeting on Monday?
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals. Thank you for allowing me in. This is a request for a special meeting. As the board is most certainly aware, this is a, an application for affordable housing, an element of the township's court approved settlement. And we had a very meaningful set of, set of presentations to you in early, late summer and early fall. The last time we were before you, first week of October, we had substantially completed the presentation and optimistically carried it to the first available hearing, and that was in December. And then for reasons that were beyond the control of the board and the applicant, that meeting was canceled. And we find ourselves here tonight. We would appreciate it if the board would consider a special meeting. The, the best dates we know for special meetings are if you take the last couple of days of the month. If you get into the fifth week of the month, you avoid almost all conflicts. And I would ask if you would consider the days that are available the last, last week of January.
Do you think in Thursday, the 27th?
No.
Wait, 7th, 8th, 9th? Um. Monday, the 31st is a 5th Monday. Am I doing that correctly?
Yes.
That is a day, as a 5th Monday, is almost assurances that there are no conflicts. We would ask that you consider that date for the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I'm available, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would not, I'm not, that doesn't.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Why, I have a conflict that day.
I could probably make it work.
I'm good.
Who just said?
Joe Cristiano was good.
Thank you.
And I do not place on the record, the applicant acknowledges the responsibility of being financially responsible for all costs of the special meeting.
Jordan, Jen, Jerry?
I'm personally good. But at a minimum, I could be here.
Thank you.
Jerry, you're good.
Ron, you're good?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. Do we have, we have, we have a quorum?
I have Nick, Evelyn, Paul Bivai, Joe Cristiano, Paul Dorado. Brian, can you make the 31st? Brian Greenfield?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I can't make it.
Dominic, can you make that date?
Yes.
Dominic's good.
I'm good, Eileen.
Rob Seaman's good, so we do have a quorum.
Yeah, I may be able to jump into the meeting for a little bit, but I won't be able to say.
All right, and some people aren't eligible to vote, but I can probably get you some videos to watch between now and then, since we have time.
And the transcripts are on file, Mrs. Rabano.
You've heard that, it looks like we have eight board members. We could have, we have some that are not here tonight that might be available, but assuming they're not, it looks like eight board members. Is that satisfactory to your client?
It's more than satisfactory. I think that it's very much appreciated that the board members are volunteering for that.
Okay, then what I'll do is I'll announce it, but we'll still have to do the Open Public Meetings Act special meeting notice. So the application of FP Howell LLC, case number SD 2990, will be carried to the board's. I'm sorry, it was 131, was that it?
Yes, Monday, the 31st.
Okay. January 31st, 2022, will be a special meeting, beginning at 7 o'clock. All documents are on file in the town, on the township's website and available for inspection and printing. The instructions on how to access the meeting will be on the township's website at least 10 days prior. An Open Public Meetings Act notice will be published in at least two newspapers, at least 48 hours in advance of that meeting. No further notice to property owners is required.
Mr. Chairman, all board members and board professionals, thank you all.
Thank you.
You.
Good night.
Yeah.
Happy New Year.
Thank you to all you two.
Let's get, is there any other business we need to attend to?
I have no other correspondence. You just have one resolution?
Yep, so resolution, case number SD-2997, Larrabee Realty LLC. Can you please tell me the eligible voters, please?
Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to memorialize.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, next resolution is the amendment to the conservation element of the master plan.
We don't have that one yet, so you can skip that.
Okay. Review of submission waivers before the board. We have none on the agenda.
The only thing, the only thing left is the application for Poor Golf, which is Mr. Owen's case.
Please get the attorneys in for Mr. Cohen?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Poor Golf LLC. I believe we should also have Rich DiFalcone.
I have him in.
And possibly Joe Callahan, gentleman.
Yeah, hold on, I will bring them in.
Joe may have to unmute.
Mr. Callahan, you probably have more than one computer on with sound. You need to mute.
Mr. Cohen, why don't we just start with Mr. DiFalcone? We'll see if we need Mr. Callahan.
Yeah, we can, that's a good idea. Just as a brief introduction, the application for you this evening is for a preliminary and amended preliminary and final site plan at Eagle Oaks Golf and Country Club for the construction of the Carolina House, which will contain a fitness facility on the first floor, six guest suites on the second floor. They're also adding a outdoor pool, relocating a tennis court, adding four pickleball courts and a small parking lot. Plans also call for a 32, 3300 square foot maintenance building on the southeast corner of the property where the present maintenance area is located. I have Mr. Callahan and Mr. DiFalcone, who's our engineer and planner, on with us this evening. If we could first have them sworn, I'll then have.
We'll start with Mr. DiFalcone. Mr. DiFalcone, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Do you state and spell your name for the record?
Richard DiFalcone, D-I-F-O-L-C-O.
Okay, would you like to qualify, Mr. DiFalcone, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, Rich, if you'd be kind enough to put your qualifications, both professional and educational, on the record as a professional engineer and planner?
Yes, sure. I graduated Rutgers University, licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. Licensed for over about 40 years now. I've appeared before this board dozens of times in the past and been qualified as an expert. Basically, done site planning and subdivision work in Monmouth County for my career since the late 70s. So I have been before the board. I've been accepted by the board in other towns.
Your credentials, Mr. DiFalcone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rich, do you want them to put up any screen in particular, the site plan or something?
Yes, Eileen has access to it or.
Yeah.
Jordan might have access to it, I'm not sure. The site plan sheet?
Hold on.
Thank you, Eileen.
Sheet 5, Eileen, is the site plan.
While she's getting it up, Mr. DiFalcone, is this site served by public sewer and water?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
So as you asked that, a question came up, or actually a comment. About a year and a half to two years ago, we began the process to amend the township's sewer service area map. And it took that long for us to get the lot, formerly Lot 37 on the corner of Asbury and Shore Oak Strive into the state's, the county's plan that was approved back in the fall of 2021.
Is that why they had the Monmouth County Board of Health comment?
I'm not, I'm not sure about that comment, but that's a standard comment, I believe, from the county board of health.
Okay, don't worry.
Right now, we are sewer service, and we're gonna have gravity sewer for the project.
Thank you. Please carry on.
Is this the sheet you want, Rich?
That's a good start sheet. Yes, Eileen, thank you. So this is, this is an overall sheet, aerial view of the project. Asbury Road is to the right, Cranberries to the bottom of the sheet. And if you're familiar with the site, the clubhouse is almost off the top left of the sheet. As you enter Shore Oak Strive, you pass former Lot 37. And then you pass the tennis courts and the pool complex, and then you enter the big parking lot. To the bottom of the sheet is the maintenance yard, which is the corner of Cranberry and Asbury, where there are two metal buildings. And that's the location where the third metal building is proposed. We can go to sheet 5, which is a detail of the top. All right, so sheet, yeah. All right, so this is a detail of what's proposed at the corner of Asbury and Shore Oak Strive. Start with the bottom of the page. We're building the Carolina House, which is in the center of the sheet. It's like an L-shaped building. The first floor is a fitness area, and the second floor are six suites to be used by the members and their guests. Because that site is remote from the roadways, we're constructing a fire emergency access road from Asbury along the bottom of the site, making use of a portion of the existing cart path to provide a 20-foot-wide fire lane between the big parking lot, which is to the west, and Asbury Road, which is the east boundary. So that roadway will then service the Carolina House with fire access. And we have received positive comments from the fire department on the application. So that's what they were looking for, that we have a way to get in. God forbid there's a fire, we can fight a fire. And we're bringing public water right to the same location with hydrants right at the corner of the building. Above that fire access road and south of the existing dwelling that was on former Lot 37, we're proposing four pickleball courts with a fence around them. On the opposite side, the north side of the former Lot 37 dwelling, we have a 28-space parking lot, which is accessed from Asbury Road. We're eliminating the existing driveway to the home, which is north of the proposed curb cut, and putting in the driveway, 25-foot-wide driveway. and putting in the driveway, twenty-five-foot wide driveway, a two-way driveway, full access to Asbury Road. A third tennis court is proposed to the east of the tennis courts that are shown on the plan as existing. And a third pool is proposed to the east of the second pool, which is existing. There is a tennis court, which is presently where the third pool will go. That tennis court will be relocated to the east end of the tennis complex. The other sheet, Eileen, I think is sheet ten, which is the maintenance yard.
Okay.
So at the corner of Asbury and Cranberry Road is the existing maintenance area where they maintain the equipment that is used to maintain the golf course. The metal buildings are presently full, and they need additional room to store equipment, which presently is being stored outside. So in order to preserve the equipment during the off-season and the winter months and the rain events, we like to keep the expensive equipment in the building. The maintenance building proposed is forty by eighty, and it is primarily for the storage of existing equipment. So it's out of the weather. And that will be accessed from the existing driveway, which is immediately adjacent to the front of the building. That's the overview of what is proposed to be built. We have the letters from C M A and from, from Jen Beam. I can go through the main comments.
Do you like our professionals or just?
We can do that, too.
Ms. Newman, Ron, you want to swear in, Ms. Newman and Ms. Beam? I mean, I'm sorry, not, or Jordan, that's right, Jordan's not here today. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your names for the record.
Jennifer Beam, B E A H M.
Jordan Rizzo, R I Z Z O.
Jordan, you want to go first?
Sure. Mr. DiFalcio, do you want to go through the list of variance's waivers, or do you want me to read them off?
Uh, you can go through them, and I can just affirm or comment on them if needed.
And if you plan to comply, just say that as well.
Yes.
Uh, the first variance I have is for the fence height. You are proposing to relocate and then install a new fence along the ten, the new tennis court. The max fence height is six feet, and because this is surrounding the tennis courts, this is ten feet tall.
That is correct. And the only comment I have is it's in keeping with the rest of the golf course and under one eighty-eight dash eighty-one, which is the recreational residential community ordinance. Under item two, it says, "All structures relating to a recreational facility shall conform to the following schedule." And then it says, "Minimum setback fifteen feet." And it specifically says that this ordinance only is specific to the recreational part of of the town. It doesn't apply anywhere else. So I don't know whether that.
I don't think he's talking about the setback. I think he's talking about the height of the fence, Rich.
Uh, the height of the fence. Okay, well, if the height of the fence exceeds the height of the fence, then we'll just ask for that, ask for that waiver or variance, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Tennis court fence needs to be that height.
You do comply with the setback. It's strictly just a ten-foot fence where a six-foot fence is.
Right. And I think it's not just, I don't think it's just the tennis court. I think it's the pickleball court as well.
That's correct. The pickleball and tennis court both have a ten-foot fence.
Right.
All right, so we will ask.
That's, that's the one variance I have, and then.
Just for the public, public benefit, Mr. DiFalcio, is that because a six-foot fence would be inappropriate?
Right, it wouldn't be high enough to stop the, the, the ball from leaving the court. And just for the board's information, we have a buffer between the, the fence and the public right of way. So in addition to the fence, there is an evergreen buffer. And I believe the trees are even higher than the ten-foot fence. Thank you.
Rich, and a ten-foot fence is a standard size for all tennis courts and pickleball courts. Is that correct?
It is correct. Yes, it is.
And you did mention it is landscape, correct?
It is fully landscape, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. DiFalcio, I have a few design waivers. First is regarding curb ramps from the parking area.
We have no problem adding the extra ramp or asking for the waiver. We believe that, you know, there'll be sufficient access from the handicap areas to the sidewalk, but we will add that. It's not a problem.
So you will comply?
Yes, we will.
Uh, you had mentioned you have the fire emergency access. It's twenty feet wide. A thirty-foot wide circulation aisle is required. So that'll be a design waiver. But you did receive an approval from the fire chief, or is that still pending review?
No, we have an approval, and I think the classification, we don't have a circulation aisle. We have a fire lane that we built. So the site already has circulation aisles within it, which is previously approved. This application, the only major road that we built, if you want to call it a road, is a fire road. So it's accessed from the site through the large parking area and from my take on it anyway, the proposal for the fire lane is to meet fire needs. It's not to be used by general public.
Rich. Rich, the requirement is a thirty-foot wide circulation must be maintained for emergency purposes. That's the requirement. So he's not asking you whether you have it. That's what is required, and you do not have it. You have twenty feet, not thirty feet. So can you please just justify the twenty feet?
Yes, the twenty feet is the standard of the state for fire access.
Okay, well, thirty feet is the standard of Howell Township. So can you justify twenty feet versus thirty feet?
Yes, I believe that we can meet the state standard, and twenty feet is proposed.
That's not justifying it. Like, you, you need to tell me why that's gonna be sufficient. Like, I, I don't understand why this is becoming so difficult. The requirement is thirty feet. You work in Howell a lot. The requirement has always been thirty feet, as you know. So deflecting the question is not providing us the information. Just provide the information. Is it, is it, can you circulate a fire truck? Can you circulate an ambulance? Does it provide adequate circulation for emergency purposes? Like, I don't understand why this is becoming so difficult.
So, so Ms. Beam, if I could, if I could jump on that bandwagon, please?
Yeah.
You know, looking at the Fire Bureau's site plan review, item number two, you know, he's asking for an apparatus movement plan showing the ability for the trucks to navigate the proposed access roadway. Is that probably because we don't have thirty feet?
Well, that's what we require, and so that's probably why he's asking if you're gonna ask for a ten-foot reduction in the width of the circulation aisle. I don't care what you call it, fire lane circulation aisle. They want to make sure their apparatus can circulate. Did you provide that information?
I understand.
Ken, if I may for a sec?
Yeah.
The report from the Fire Bureau does say they have no objection to the proposed improvements as described on the plans as submitted. So they've obviously seen the twenty-foot aisle. They've also asked for additional information, the three items, the keys, the knockbox, and the apparatus movement plan. We will be happy to provide them as a condition of this approval.
Thank you.
Rich, in your opinion, can this twenty-foot wide access handle emergency vehicles, emergency ambulance, et cetera?
Yes, it can. And the twenty-foot is the minimum dimension on pretty much the straightaways. At the curve in the driveway, it's much wider than twenty feet to take into account the, the turning movement of the larger vehicles that they might come in.
Yeah, we'll provide that movement plan to the Fire Bureau.
Yes, we will.
And to the board as well, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
The next design waiver I have is parking space length nineteen feet is required, parking spaces, and you're proposing eighteen for all the new parking spaces.
We can comply with that request.
Okay, do you know how you plan to expand the parking spaces? Because they are abutting the basin to the north.
Yeah, we're gonna go to the south.
Okay, closer into the site. The next design waivers regarding stormwater management. So this is a waiver from the township's stormwater management ordinance, which is the same as the state's under N J A C seven colon eight. Uh, you are considered a major development because you are serving more than one acre and increasing impervious coverage by more than a quarter acre. Uh, you are proposing to meet the water quality requirements, but are seeking a waiver for quantity and groundwater recharge. Is that correct?
That's correct.
An explanation for why you're requesting this?
Yeah, so when we designed the site plan, as you know, this site is a golf course, and it's served by irrigation pond. Irrigation pond is within this same block and lot as our application. And the site drains to the irrigation pond. And right now, as it stands, there is a slight deficiency of annual runoff into the pond so that we are pumping groundwater to meet our irrigation needs. We're trying to maintain as much volume in the pond as possible. And while we're addressing the water quality issue in this application, we'd like the amount of volume to be maintained as much as we can to get into the pond. Because once it goes into the pond, it's sprayed onto the grass where it is then recharged back to the ground again. So it's not as if we're discharging into a stream. We're discharging to the pond. And we like to keep the use of the irrigation as our method for recharge to the groundwater. And we need the volume to maintain so that we don't draw too much from the groundwater.
Is that both basins that are going to the irrigation pond?
Yes, it is. It's one pipe. The pipes exist under the ground already. We're, we're tying it to the drainage system, and we would like to use the pipes that are there to carry the water to the pond. But I do agree that this water quality issue, which we have addressed, is important. But I believe the recharge is a non-issue since the irrigation will recharge over a much larger area than just a small area at the site of the pond. And that the volume is not a significant volume. The total area of this site disturbance is about three acres. And the site of this block and lot is in excess of two hundred and thirty acres. We're a very, very small percentage of the golf course. And in my mind, a de minimis amount of volume, no matter how you calculate it. But we're going through and trying to address the stormwater management, water quality issue with this application.
And I have a, a number of uh, technical comments in our letter for stormwater management, but a couple of them I want to point out um, are related to soil testing, which we agreed to complete the soil testing to make sure that the season of hot water table um, is more than two people at the basin bottom, and that you'll have the proper infiltration rates to meet your water quality requirements.
Yes, we agreed to do that during our professional meeting. Yes.
And will you also provide uh, your two-ten and one-hundred-year flows, and then the, show the downstream uh, discharge point so we can analyze the existing to propose conditions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Just for the board, I want to kind of summarize what this waiver is, since it's probably not something that's requested all that often. Um, you've probably many times heard of the stormwater requirements. The three main components of that on the state and township level are water quantity reductions, uh, which means that they're reducing existing conditions to proposed conditions for the two-ten, one-hundred-year storm events by a certain percentage. That's fifty percent, seventy-five percent, and eighty percent respectively. So that's one of the, the waivers that he's seeking, as well as the groundwater recharge, which means that a certain quantity of water isn't necessarily being infiltrated into the ground. What they are proposing to comply with is the water quality benefits, which means there is a there's a, a water quality storm. It's essentially one point two five inches, and he is proposing to infiltrate that. It's essentially the first storm that, that comes through. Picks up all the debris and dirt off of the paved areas, enters the basins, and then that will all be infiltrated. So he is complying with that. Um, but the waiver is for the water quantity and the groundwater recharge. Uh, if this was a, a brand-new development, I would say that they should, you know, should definitely meet this, because this is uh, an existing development, and it's, you know, a much smaller area for the site. I think as long as he provides all the technical comments in our letter, our office would not have an issue with that, but ultimately, this is a design waiver that the board would need to approve.
And it sounds like, Mr. Rizzo, it's not really going off-site. It's all draining back into the pond, the irrigation pond.
Yeah, and, and then I just requested, Mr. DiFalcio shows that in his resubmission that where he's identified so far the immediate areas where the water drains to, but if, if they can provide the more macro areas so that we can see it's, it's all going to these, these ponds, as you're referring to.
Yeah, that, Mr. Rizzo, that plan is in the stormwater report. It shows the entire uh, storm system of the golf course, including the irrigation pond. So that is in one of the attachments which the board has on file.
May I, before we go further?
Sure.
On the downstream water report you're doing, what is that stream? What's that closest body of water?
It's the Mahagan, how do you say?
Mahagan Mahone? Mahagan Mahone, okay.
Yeah, of course, it's crammed, of course, it's Asbury Road back by the church.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, the last design waiver that I have is regarding public sidewalks. There are no existing sidewalks on any of the frontages, and they're not proposing any sidewalks.
We're asking for that waiver, correct?
Jen, do you have anything else to add to this?
The only one I have is the lighting. Did you guys review the lighting? I mean, my letter is, is a little older than yours. I have in my letter that the light, the average light intensity, um, was not provided, and so they may need a waiver. Were you guys, did you guys get that and review it, and we're okay with it?
We're gonna revise the lighting as per the letter, I think. I think there was a letter in C M A also about lighting. We were trying to be, uh, keep our poles lower and not have so many poles, but we can raise the elevation of the poles to comply with the ordinance and have the average up a point five. We were a little bit light on it. We felt that it wasn't a nighttime activity per se uh, for this part of the project. We wanted to keep the light level low.
I, I'm fine with that. I just was curious, like, um, whatever, I, I would defer this to to Jordan and Shari. I mean, they typically review the lighting. I just noted that, um, we didn't see that in the letter. So if Jordan and Shari are fine with it, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, well, I'll go over that with them. If there's areas that need to be increased, but I think from a safety point of view, we have adequate lights for the pedestrians to walk from the sidewalk to the Carolina House and back to their cars and leave. The rest of the site is not gonna be lit up at night. There's no activity.
I would just recommend at that point, then, that the applicant seek the waiver from the lighting requirement under one eighty-eight dash twenty-two, because if you don't provide that average point five overall, you're not compliant. I'm not saying, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, Rich.
Okay, okay, then we're gonna ask for that.
Get the waiver, and that way, if there's areas that Shari and Jordan feel need to be, have the lighting increased, that's one thing, but if you're not doing it overall, you still need the waiver regardless.
Okay, so we will ask for that waiver.
I agree with that approach, and we do have, uh, technical comments on the lighting as well, so that will be something that we continue to look at.
That's all I have. I mean, all the other items Jordan had already covered in his letter.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have some questions. Uh, this is obviously an amended application, so do you agree to comply with all the original conditions of previous resolutions?
Yeah.
Uh, as far as operations, I guess mainly for the Carolina House, do you anticipate any additional deliveries, employees? deliveries, employees, things of that nature?
We can bring Mr. Call.
He's doing refusers enclosure to serve this building.
Callahan at this point, he's the general manager. He'd be best to answer those questions.
Sure.
Well, before we do that, are there any other questions for Mr. DeFalco?
Yeah, I can, I can keep going through. Sorry.
Yeah, let's get Mr. DeFalco finished.
But just in general, the trash enclosure, which is at the other end of the course, will be used for the whole golf course. Though we know separate trash enclosure for this addendum to the site plan. The same goes for the deliveries. They're all done at the main receiving area, which is at the main clubhouse. And then small golf cart type trucks are used to deliver to the specific location. So there's no loading or deliveries proposed for this part of the site. Trash is taken off the site, back to the original trash location. And as far as employees, Mr. Callahan can get into that specifically.
Thanks. Can you clarify what signs you're proposing with this application?
The only sign that is proposed is at the entrance of the proposed driveway to Asbury Road. And it is identification sign that I believe reads members only, fitness area or something to that nature. It's just not a very large sign. It's illuminated externally and it sets back off the road 15 feet.
Can you provide a detail of that, please?
Yes, it's on sheet, the last page of the site plan. I think it's 12.
Okay, thank you.
Eileen, would you mind going to sheet number five? Next question is regarding the existing house. It's closer to Asbury Road.
Yes.
Can you just explain what the plan is for the pool that's there? If you'll fence it off or have safety measures?
Yes, yes, the pool, the pool is actually enclosed right now. There's a wall on one side of it with gates on the other side that are locked or have locks that can be locked. It's open sometimes and it's locked sometimes. But there's no access from the public directly to the pool. You've got to go either through the house or through the gate. So there's
Enclosed on here. Can you just on a revision, make sure that there's a pool compliant fence that surrounds the pool on both sides?
Yes, there's walls and buildings and there will be a fence for the gate. That's, we'll show that, but it is there.
And then you're showing that you're moving stairs for this building. Is that because you're, you're bringing the grade up? Or will there, will there be access in this building?
There is a rear porch which serves. Presently, there's a set of back steps which leads from the back porch down to grade. The need for those stairs is no longer there. So we're just going to put a railing across the back porch. So the porch will be accessible from the, the building. But there will not be access from the cart path to the porch. So we're taking out the steps and putting a railing across the opening where the steps had provided access to the porch so that we know access between the building and the carpet. That's on the west side of the building.
Thank you. And then Eileen, if you wouldn't mind going back to page 10 really quick. You're proposing additional landscaping along the new maintenance building. Will you agree to continue that along the Cranberry Road frontage towards and Asbury Road? So that all the gravel parking area is screened from Cranberry Road?
Right. We talked about adding shade trees along Cranberry Road. And then some, some, some lower level shrubbery to screen the parking area between the shade trees.
Okay, great. And then lastly, I guess, do you agree to comply with all of our technical comments? I know you mentioned the stormwater, but everything else as well?
Yeah, there was, it was one or two that I wanted, not to blanket the, I say to agree to, we're going to discuss further things. For one, for instance, item A7 revised the floor drain from the Carolina House so that it ties into the sanitary sewer system and not the storm sewer system. We're going to move the drain outside the building. So it's going to be collecting outside water, no inside water. So then we'll connect the storm sewer system, not the sanitary sewer system. If it was in the building, I would agree with you. The main reason for that drain was at the bottom of the ramp. We didn't want the water to come into the building. We're going to move the ramp outside the door rather than inside the door.
Want to make sure that we're not crossing, but I'm sure you can comply with that. That's not anything complicated.
But the basement was lower than a sewer system. So we can't, we didn't want to put a pump in.
Anything else on the technical?
And then the fire retention basin, we talked about this one near the parking lot and the second one was near the driving range. The one near the driving range cannot have landscaping in it because it's in the driving range. So I'm going to either make that into a it'll look like a sand trap. It'll be an infiltration basin with a sand bottom. Or we'll relocate it out of the driving area, out of the driving range area to
Which comment is this?
Comment number four. I'm sorry, the letter is in B4, page 74.
Okay, I mean, ultimately you'll need to be compliant with the BMP manual there.
Correct, but whether it has landscape or not is, is, is the only option. We may go with the straight infiltration basin without
That would be acceptable as well.
Okay, other than that, we agree with the rest of the comments. So your technical review.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bean, do you have any comments? Shari?
Um, I don't, I don't have anything else. Nope, I think we covered everything.
Okay, Shari, do you have any comments?
No, Jordan covered the comments I had.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anybody from the board have any comments? Mr. DeFalco? Am I? Am I right to say that it sounds like that we can't, we can't look at final, we don't have finalized plans here. Sounds like there's a lot of open items left that need to be, be addressed.
I don't think there's a lot of items. It's just
Engineering stuff, nothing, nothing major at all.
We're not, we're not moving parking lots. We're not moving roads. We're not moving buildings. We're just
The lighting's not right. The apparatus turning
Not right.
We asked for a waiver on the lighting. And we're going to work on that with the engineer to, if there's any area that he wants additional lights, we'll adjust it. But we're asking
We're expanding the parking lot to the south that we don't have a plan for.
We totally have a plan for.
I thought I heard, that's why I'm asking the question. These are the things that I heard.
No, there's a plan for it. We just need to expand one foot to the south for the, we can comply with the length of the parking.
Todd, I think he's saying that we don't have plans that show it. It's not that you don't have a plan for it, but we don't have, right?
Yeah, but the board, the board, it sounds like there's a lot of stuff here that the board hasn't seen and
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe there are major items that your professionals would normally
Okay. Item, I just wanted to clarify for myself because I was trying to follow the conversation.
Yeah, we did set, we did submit a whole set of revised plans in the very, to address the first set of comments.
And this is chairman. I think you can, the board can consider three options or actually I guess four options. One option would be to grant preliminary and final subject to, you know, certain items being reviewed by the board's professionals, but you would not see that again as a board. You would not see it again. You could grant preliminary approval and the applicant could do all of those same things. And then come back and the board would see what the final plan would look like. You could carry them for one additional meeting and they could do all of those things. Or yeah, if the board wasn't inclined to approve their request for relief, I suppose you could deny them. But you know, that, those are basically the options that the board has. Okay, and they're, and they're asking for preliminary and final is the fourth that we could, we could, we could grant preliminary. Yes. Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if this was a new site or a brand new development or something, I could totally see your point. I just think in this particular case.
Mr. Cohen, we completely understand the arguments. So the chairman's, I was just advising the chair of which way to go. You wouldn't have asked for preliminary and final if you didn't think you had provided enough information.
Yeah, I'm asking for clarification here yet, Mr. Cohen. I'm not there yet. There was a lot for the last half hour, there's a lot going back and forth between our engineer and Mr. DeFalco, and I'm trying to get it clarified so that the board and the public understand. Does anybody else on the board have any questions or comments before we ask Mr. Cohen for his next witness?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that maybe the board would be more comfortable if our professionals would weigh in on whether or not this could receive final pending their review at that point in time. Or is there so much that they would feel more comfortable if the board saw it once again? So I would like to yield to the professionals for that.
Well, Mr. Chair, maybe we could do that after we hear the next witness.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Took the words out of my mouth. I would say let's hear the rest of the testimony.
I apologize.
If there is more testimony, Mr. Cohen.
There, there might be very brief, I think the only thing, questions we haven't answered is you wanted, from my notes, the operations of the Savannah House. Yes. And, and the use of the other house, but Mr. Callahan will be happy to testify. That would just need to swear a minute.
Okay, is he on camera?
He is.
Yes, he is.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
You have to unmute, Joe. Let me text him.
He, it looks like he's trying. Usually in the lower left-hand corner of the zoom screen.
I can't hear you though.
He's got a very bad connection. He keeps freezing up. Okay, can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yeah.
Joe, for the record, would you, well, Ron, I think you need to be sworn, maybe?
Yeah, I tried to before. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Joseph Callahan, C-A-L-L-A-H-A-N.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cohen. Callahan, actually, just before we get started, what's your position with the applicant?
I'm the general manager of Eagle Oaks.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
And Joe, how long has that, you've been in that position?
I'm sorry, sir.
How long have you been the general manager of Eagle Oaks?
I've been there 27 years.
And obviously you're familiar with the project and the proposals this evening, correct?
Correct.
Could you give the board an idea on what the, the operations for the Savannah House? How many employees will be there? When it will be open, that kind of stuff?
I'm basically just taking the existing staff that I have working in the Savannah House will now work the Carolina House.
Okay, and the purpose of the Carolina House is just to have overnight guests from the members of the club and their guests, correct?
Correct, correct. So if someone has guests coming in from out of town, they can stay there. If they're playing golf, they can also stay overnight and then play golf the next day.
So you don't, you don't, do not anticipate additional number of employees though, right?
No, not at all.
And the use of the other residential property that we have that's now part of the club, that too will be used for groups if there's weddings or private golf groups that can use it in connection with the club. Is that correct?
Correct.
I have nothing else of Mr. Callahan. If the board has questions, obviously be happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, just with regard to the the overnight guests, that's exclusively limited to people who are associated with members of the golf courses. It's not something where you know, you can just decide to come to the golf course with a, as a non-member and, and just, you know, you want to play golf for the weekend. It has to be affiliated and go through a, a club member.
Joe, you need to answer.
Correct. Okay.
Ron, just following up on that though, you did indicate that like if you were associated with a wedding, you could stay there. That's not a membership. You don't have to be a member to be a guest of a wedding.
Well, a member has to support the wedding. You just can't just walk in.
Right, but like I as a guest of somebody who's getting married there may have zero affiliation with the member and I could stay there?
Well, the way that I understood it was that you can't simply make a reservation there yourself. It has to be sponsored by a member of the club.
That is absolutely correct.
Correct.
Does that affect like wedding guests as well?
Yes, they have to be associated with the wedding. Well, I don't, the way it's going into the resolution is that overnight guests have to be sponsored by a member. So there's, you know, you can't just be a wedding guest and decide you want to stay there. Some member has to say, you know, I'm sponsoring this person to stay there.
And is this one of those opportunities where we should, we should record that with the D?
Yes. And then I just want to hear, I guess, from Mr. DeFalco and Jen, if you want to weigh in. I'm not, you know, a, a member of any golf club. Is this a normal customary and incidental use overnight quarters in, in golf clubs? That this would be accessory to the golf club?
Yes, it was envisioned when the ordinance was written. There's this whole section on what they call
cottages.
Cottages, which was meant for this purpose.
Ron, I was asked to do a memo about that when the application
Mr. Callahan, can you mute yourself? Because I know you have your computer on and your phone on and you're echoing badly.
Try to reduce the, the volume on your computer in the meantime.
Or just mute your, just mute your computer.
Okay, go ahead, Todd.
Um, I believe I was asked by Jen back in April of last year to do a memo regarding cottages and the word and the use around golf course around the country, which I did propose and I did write. And I believe she accepted
Agreed.
My explanation with regard to cottages being
Initially, I questioned it as, as Todd is indicating as to whether or not this constitutes accessory, et cetera. Mr. Cohen drafted a memo about how this was going to be used and his interpretation of the cottages section of the ordinance, it was submitted to zoning. And I reviewed it and I agree, I don't know 100% whether it's consistent with country clubs everywhere, but I will say that this ordinance does have a provision for these cottages as accessory in this fashion to the golf course. So I do, do believe that what they're proposing is accessory.
Okay, Ron, there are many golf courses throughout the country at all levels that have residents on property for those type of use.
Yeah, I would never join a golf club that would have me as a member.
Okay, Rodney.
Hey, thank you. And our professionals have any other comments or questions?
I do not.
Mr. Cohen, is that the end of your testimony?
I believe it is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so will, does anybody from the board have any last minute comments before I open it up to the public? Okay, seeing none. Eileen, can you please open it up? Well, does anybody, we've been sitting here for two hours and 15 minutes before we opened to the public. Does anybody need a five minute break or we want to get this wrapped up?
Ryan, I think there's only like five people in the public, so I say we
All right, very good. Let's open it up to the public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. Anyone wishing to ask questions or comment on the application, please use the raise your hand feature and I'll bring it into the meeting one at a time. You will need to be sworn in and give your name and address and you'll need audio and video. If you're calling in, please use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Thank you.
And we'll give you about a minute or so to raise your hand. If not, they'll close the public.
Yep, it is now. Nine fourteen and 30 seconds.
I have no one with their hand up.
Okay, we'll wait another 10 seconds. Okay, anybody raise their hand at all?
No.
All right, we'll close the public portion of this meeting. I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but can one of my professionals, either Jordan or Jen, can you just summarize again what we? What is not on the plans that we have in our packet and what the, needs to be adjusted and agreed upon after we may vote on this thing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can summarize everything that we discussed and then explain the implications. First thing, they, they agreed to provide curb ramps, it's probably just going to be one additional curb ramp to make sure that we have at least one every 65 feet, that should.
What is a curb ramp? Curb ramp is for ADA access?
Correct, it's, it's essentially just a depressed or a flush curb and then it, it ramps up, um, about six feet to make up that, that six-inch curb.
And that's not something that you designed last, because that's how you want to design it, there's an ADA standard that's, uh, applicable to that, that has to follow federal guidelines, correct?
Correct, it's, it's not going to change the way the sidewalk looks on a plan, it's really just going to. Lower the sidewalk six inches in a location which they can show on a grading plan, so I have no concerns with that.
Thank you.
Uh, the next was regarding the lighting. They did request a waiver and then it's pretty standard that.
And the waiver is because we don't have lights that are bright enough or we don't have lights that are too bright? What, what are we voting on?
Brian, I'll, I'll interrupt on this one, it just, the lighting is a little bit low, like point three, point four at the center area of the parking lot. So, all the parking stalls do meet the point five. Um, it, it really was just a comment that it's not at point five, I understand their point that, you know, it's a residential area, they'd want it a little bit lower, so it's not so bright. Um, but that, that's where they were lacking on their lighting in the center part of the parking lot.
If, if, if Mr. De Falco believes that he's within compliance of IES's recommendations for light levels in a parking lot, would that suffice for the board?
Yes.
He actually meets the ordinance for the town, he's, he's slightly under for IES. The, the, um, ordinance requires point three, so he does.
What is he asking relief for then? What, what is it that he does not comply with?
Technically, he doesn't need it, it's IES he's under, not so.
Well, then, he asked, I'm sorry, he asked.
I'm sorry, but wait, Sherry.
He asked for a waiver.
He did, the, the section 18822, the lighting intensity provided at ground level shall average a max of point five, the average. I don't have it, it was not, the, my letter asked for it to be provided, that's why I asked.
Okay. So, my comment was that he wasn't meeting the IES standard.
Okay.
And it satisfies all municipal standards.
I don't know, also, let me look, I don't know if he has the average on the plan either.
Make sure that we add the average if it's not on the plan.
Well, but, no, no, no. So, if you add the average and it's not compliant, then you need a waiver, so, Mr. Chairman, I think that goes to your point. So, we can't tell, we can't tell at this point whether relief is required or not, and there's not a stipulation that they will comply.
Okay, let's go on to the next one.
The next one is the circulation aisle to make sure that a fire truck can, can, uh, effectively circulate the aisle. It's 20 feet, as we mentioned, uh, it looks to me that there is additional space to the south, should they need to widen that? Mr. De Falco, do you agree, what would you do if, that you do need to?
Uh, he already agreed, uh. Let me just try to focus this, Jordan. The question that the chairman asked is, what is it that they have to do that's not depicted on the plan? So, you talked about the, um, the ramp is not depicted on the plan. We don't know right now whether they comply or don't comply with the lighting. They have to submit a, uh, some sort of, uh, circulation or turning radius, something that, uh, pursuant to the request of the Fire Bureau, which they said they would comply with. To show that, uh, emergency vehicles can successfully access the site. We're done with them agreeing and stuff, it's just a list of what needs to be added to the plan. So, aside from those three, is there anything else?
Uh, they are going to increase the length of the, the two rows of parking stalls, so that's one additional foot for each row, so that's two additional feet total. And that's going to extend to the south into the site.
That, that's it.
Okay, that's it.
I think we agreed to landscape additionally, uh.
Cranberry Road, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's the totality of, uh, what needs to be added to the plans?
And they're going to add a fence around the existing pool. Just, just to show that it's there, that's by the existing building.
I think, uh, additional landscaping around the maintenance buildings, well.
Right, that's the Cranberry roadside, yes, we agreed to put Cranberry Road in.
And, and, and move the, uh, and then what about the storm, the, the. The, the, the drain that's in the maintenance building is now going to be outside the maintenance building and then it has to tie into the storm, there was, seemed to be some dialogue there that. That was confusing to me of whether we have enough information to know where that.
I can explain, I can explain that real quick to you, it's not the maintenance building, it's the Carolina House. There's a ramp that leads from the grade down, 10 feet down into the basement of the Carolina House. So, at the bottom of that ramp, when it rains, there may be some water going down the ramp towards the door at the bottom. There's a drain right now at the bottom, inside the basement, we're going to move the drain to the other side of the door, so it's outside the door. So, that it picks up the water before it hits the door.
Got it.
The drain's already there, just got to move it.
The reason for the comment was there was an interior drain, I just wanted to confirm that we're not taking anything.
And Jordan, there was some, I thought there was some storm drainage commentary, comments around the maintenance area and not knowing where that actually is getting tied into. Did I miss?
Uh, it's really a technical comment I have, it's just to make sure that, uh, they provide their 210 100-year flows.
Which I think Mr. De Falco said was in the report?
I, I don't think the flows are, but the, the downstream drainage may be.
Okay, is that important for the board to understand? Since everything seems to be draining towards the retention pond in the center irrigation pond?
I, I don't think so, I think that we can, we can review that, um, with the engineer.
Anybody else have comments? Okay, Ron, you wanted to, uh, quickly run through the four options for us?
Yeah, sure, um, the board can grant preliminary and final, uh, subject to all the things you just heard, being added to the plan and reviewed by the board's professionals. Uh, just under that, just understand you will not see it again. Uh, the second is that you can grant preliminary approval only, all these things can be done. And the applicant can return, uh, for final approval, basically, you know, showing you the final plan, presumably, at that point, they would have added everything. And, um, provided the additional information on the, on the lighting. Uh, the board could, uh, carry the application to another meeting night and the applicant can do all these things and then they would be prepared. Uh, for preliminary and final approval, or four, if you don't, uh, agree with some of the relief that's required, you could deny the application.
Great, okay, thank you, Mr. Cohen, do, do you want to summarize your testimony?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, this is a permitted use in the RRC zone, it's a mended site plant of an existing site that's been in the township for many, many years. Uh, we've addressed most of the concerns, if not all, of your professionals, we'll be happy to submit them in revised plans. I think the, uh, items that are outstanding, as expressed by your professionals, can definitely be reviewed by them. And I would request that the board grant preliminary and final, uh, this evening if they see fit.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, just if, if the board is inclined to grant preliminary and final, you can't delegate the power to grant a waiver to professionals. So, I think we need to have just some quantification of what we're talking about with the lighting that the professionals are going to review. You, you can't really say we're going to grant a waiver for something, we don't know what it is, or granting a waiver for something that'll be determined by board members. You know, board professionals at, at a later time, so is there a better way that we could just explain, uh, a little more precisely what they would be? I mean, they're confirming the average, but what if they, what if they need relief, is there some sort of way that we can discuss? You know, the intensity of the relief that, that might be required?
Is this, is, is, let me ask you this question just out of the box, if we took a five-minute potty break, can Mr. De Falco, you know, take some time and, and run that average? And let us know what that average would be?
I could, I could not run that in a five-minute potty break, I'm sorry, no, sorry. But I could say that if we asked for the waiver on the average, we're asking for the waiver, I mean.
Right, but I think, what I'm asking for, you're asking for a waiver for what?
Can we give them a parameter, Rich, that we won't go less than so number?
The average is point five and, and we won't go more than a tenth above or below that average number, point four to point six.
Or Sherry, do we want to say that we'll give them a waiver to meet the, the IES as minimum recommendation for a parking lot?
Right, so the IES, uh, minimum would, they would need to increase the lighting by a little bit.
Which would increase the safety factor, is, is that, is that because, is that because you feel there may be a safety issue with having a parking lot, uh, too dark?
Right, it's the center of the parking lot is, is a little dimmer than IES recommends.
Okay, is, is that, is that, is that design waiver, um, good enough, Mr. Cuchero?
I'm fine with either that or the point four to point six, either one of those is fine with me, that, that at least the board understands, you know, what it may be granting relief from.
If, if I have anything to weigh on it, I would lean towards, uh, Sherry's, uh, comment about, um, meeting the, the IES, uh, minimum for safety reasons.
Okay.
Okay.
That would certainly do it, Mr. Chairman, in terms of specificity.
Fantastic, anybody else from the board have comments? If not, you, you know, the four options we have, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Brian, I, I'm gonna, based upon the, the testimony and, uh, the board professionals, I, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant, uh, amended preliminary and final major site plan. With the stipulations discussed, um, with the IES just recently discussed by Sherry. Uh, and subject to board, uh, review.
And that's also understanding that the resolution is going to be, Ron, I believe you said is going to be, uh, recorded?
Well, the, uh, the, we can record the resolution or you can just, if you want, have a deed restriction on the occupancy of the, um. Uh, of those residential units.
Yeah, I would make a recommendation on the, the, the restriction.
Okay, I was second, Nick, Nick, motion.
Great, thank you. All right, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Babai?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Deputy, uh, excuse me, Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Paramonte?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion.
Thank you very much for your time this evening, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, being that said, before we adjourn the meeting, uh, I'd like to discuss something real quick with my professionals. The, the board, the board would like, uh, to, to see if the board professionals would be interested in providing us with a little bit of education. Uh, we have some new members, we also have some members moving up. And sometimes, you know, understanding what we're looking at, not, not necessarily getting into the planning board roles. Uh, that's going to be handled by going to the, the required, um, training. But just, just in general, looking at, uh, looking at plans and. What some of the comments are and then how to do some research on the general ordinances on our. Um, applicable to the town, does, does our board professionals have any objection to offering us some type of training session like that?
No objection, Mr. Chairman, and it may have been before your time, but, uh, we've, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, I know, well, well, we did one, one training session for us, which is eye-opening for me, it was good for me as a new board member. Okay, uh, I'll work with you, uh, independently to see what makes sense. If it's like a 15 minutes before a, a meeting at light or we, we find some other means of making that happen. Does that sound fair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, with that being said, does anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Nope, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a great day and, and a happy new year.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.